Today is Monday, November the twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, the time's now five p.m. Work session, city council, city Trinidad, in order. We have three items, then our agenda. Item one, our parking fees, item two, plastic bags, and item three, Trinidadian venue change discussion. And item four was just a basic suggestion if council has any other agenda items that they would bring like to talk about in the near future. So let's go and get started. Item one, parking fees, and I'm not sure, hopefully council had an opportunity to look at the parking fees, Mike.
So.
Yours.
Council, first off, let me apologize because I was supposed to send you an email. I put the two thousand nine parking study in there. I was supposed to send you an email, not to read the entire thing.
Sure.
Not if you did. Appreciate it. The reason I put that in there is in that two thousand nine study, it's outdated, but they had, like on page twenty-two of this study, they had some recommendations, they had pay for parking, they had parking assessment districts, different options business improvement districts for parking downtown business associations in lieu of fee programs. So the option of pay for parking has been kinda discussed in the past, nothing implemented. They make some recommendations in there. I believe Councilman Lopez is the one that brought this idea up, and I think we need to have a lot more discussion on it. And it's gonna take some staff time to do this, to look into this. So I'd look for council's input on your thoughts on the whole, you know, parking fees or parking kiosks or, I don't see meters per se, you know, like we used to have way back, but that option. So I'm open for any kind of input or discussion, Council.
Just to start off, I just wanna mention that, you know, you didn't tell us not to read the whole thing, but I read it anyhow. But at the same time, I think it was worthwhile reading because it pointed out some of the things that these other communities do and how they might visit Trinidad or not. And of course, we've got a lot of questions on those as well, but start there. So Karen.
I would get totally opposed to meters. I don't think that'll do us any good, any justice. I think it'll get people upset. I still think, just from being downtown all day long, I think the problem is that most business owners and their employees or people that are in a business for a long period of time take up the prime spots and then there's nothing else. For people that come in, do a short visit to a shop and then leave, I don't know what the answer is. But I do believe maybe if we could get somebody to be the parking meter person again and just to mark tires, maybe that would help to get people in the practice of not parking long term on Main and College.
Yeah, mark tires because they found that they had a.
No, not mark tires or maybe just a couple of times go by and put a note where you can't even put a note on it.
Can you put a note on it?
If we have the, you know, we have the, in your packet was the new parking structure that we have with two-hour parking, thirty-minute parking, loading zones, they're all defined and they're signed. And if they're signed, we can monitor them, can't mark tires. There was a court ruling against them, but I think, you know, two-hour parking, but we would have to be consistent throughout and have somebody, you know, for eight hours a day monitoring all that. Right now, it's, you know, Charlie's having a hard enough time. And we do have someone doing this, but he's pulled over for animal control and then he's pulled off for, you know, a standby or he has to go somewhere else. So to have someone dedicated might be an option.
And you know what really concerns me, and you stop and think about it, all the development downtown is gonna be the living quarters and we're really gonna have a problem when those people stop parking.
Yeah, 'cause of course, and that's why it was kinda interesting to read this whole thing.
Well, did you see where they thought that the repertory theater was gonna make a big impact on downtown traffic? Because there are two hundred and eighty people in the theater all the time. But.
When's the last time?
It was in here. It was in here.
Yeah, I remember it was this, two thousand nine was when it was going to.
Before SCRT opened up. But I think, I don't, if you look at the, when you go through downtown Trinidad, even look at the public lots or the loaded with people, there's not even too many spaces available off the street to park. But I think it's a, it is definitely a problem. I don't know if the city could do a PR campaign to try and talk people into not parking in front. On any given day, I could look up and down Commercial Street and find at least ten spots that people that own businesses have parked.
Okay, well, I just wanna let everyone know, I kinda brought this up because when we were having our discussion about the budget, we thought about what are other ways that we can generate revenue? And this was something that kinda sparked it. It's an easy way, I feel, can be accomplished where we can follow other models from other communities where you have several different types of parking permits for retailers, residential inhabitants, and also you have your visitors that come in. There's even validation options that are proposed in Breckenridge where say if you wanna keep people coming in and out of your shop, spending money, they can validate their parking pass and they're generating towards a sales tax drug. They have to make a purchase, endorsing and validation. But still, there are ways that we can generate revenue in an area that is highly utilized for parking. We have a lot of flow of traffic coming in right now, and I feel that it's a, it's something that we should at least entertain the idea to see if, one, it can provide enough revenue to pay for their own parking attendant. Two, we can create an outreach program with the monies from it, and three, we can add to our coffer. So you're right in saying that we need to get someone out there to monitor vehicles. But we all know that we had an issue trying to find resources for those three new officers just this year for twenty twenty. This is a way that can pay for itself while still bringing in extra revenue that we can therefore later add to our main coffers because we could use some extra money. And when you go to other large tourist communities, I'm not saying like large in terms of the amount of people that are there, but they're highly visited because they are a tourist community, which I believe that is what we're trying to become. And it's just a matter of time before it hits us. We could already have a program implemented with new technology so that we can get revenue coming in. And it doesn't have to be gouging people, fifty cents an hour. But then that also creates the mechanism, I believe, that would keep retailers and their staff from parking directly in front of their businesses. Because we wanna have the other people that are shopping, spending money there. And we have many municipal parking lots throughout the community right now that aren't utilized by staff or by employers. It's utilized by those who don't get those prime spots. So when you see them, you see them filled and you see ten cars of people that you know that are parked in front of their businesses, that should be the reverse. We've gotta create a culture in this community where we are not afraid to walk two blocks to get into our storefront. You brought up the idea of maybe putting a municipal parking lot back here on Second and Chest or Convent, no, Commercial, excuse me. That's another viable tool that we can use and say, hey, park here as an employee, as a retail owner, and then you can walk to your business while allowing the ability for others to come who would spend money in your store or business of whatever sort it may be. So do I want to be charging people to park in Trinidad? No, but it is a way that we could be looking as a revenue generator for our community to add to what we have. And if you talk to any other communities that are in that tourist realm, they do this. And we will be a tourist community. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And if we can get the technology implemented like the kiosk, you don't have meters at every individual site. You also don't have to put it throughout the entire community. You can just put it in the Commercial and Main Street, in the Historic District, and then if things change, we can maybe add it to Elm Street or to Church Street or some other highly trafficked areas. And again, so I've thought about what if you have the old Trinidad Catholic School turning into a residential facility of some sort? An apartment building, what have. Well, then you could still get those people to register with the community for a residential parking permit, just like you would for any business, et cetera. So that way they can park in any of our municipal lots for more than, say, a two-hour period without being fined. Because you wanna take care of your own, they live there. But for those that are coming to visit here and spend money in our community, in our retail outlets and restaurants and cafes, whatnot, it's a way to generate revenue, and they're not gonna bat an eye on fifty cents for an hour. When they go to Breckenridge or Telluride or Santa Fe.
Manitou Springs is a big one.
You are going to pay to park in those good locations in the coveted area of town. That's, you know, commercial.
You're talking about using meters, right?
Well, it's a kiosk, so there's not an actual individual meter like we're accustomed to. What they do is they'll have kiosks scattered sporadically throughout the area. You go up to the meter, you put in your license plate number, you can either put in a dollar bill because it has a bill reader or you can use a credit card or debit card. You plug in the amount of time that you want. Now, this is the interesting thing about it. Say you choose to walk around downtown and you're six blocks away from where your vehicle is because you went to Moose's and you parked over at La Parte. How am I gonna get back to put more money into my meter? Well, they have an app on your phone. If you have a smartphone, you can just go into it and put more money from your debit or credit card to add to it. It's a really nice technology and feature so that way you don't feel like you have to run back somewhere. And what do you do? You stay where you are, you continue to spend money. I've done it before and it was just nice because then you don't get a ticket. I just think it's a way that we could look at another potential revenue. And I would not want to push something into an ordinance right away and real fast. I would wanna do a study, have a forum with the community because you want stakeholders to come forward, business owners on the street to say, hey, I can't park here because of this. I really think we just have a culture in this community where we wanna park right in front of our door. And that's gotta change if we want to have a spot for customers to come into our businesses. And the only way to really change that is not through marking someone's tire and saying you gotta move. I think it's by actually having an impact in a financial form. And if they wanna park in front of their business, okay, then you're gonna pay two bucks. Or you can use one of our municipal lots that's a block and a half, two blocks away. And if we have the issue like, well, where do we park now? We're running out of spaces. This is a good problem to have. We can look into some of our other areas though where we can create another municipal parking lot. If we want growth, we have to be ready for it and welcoming it. Otherwise, we're gonna be scared. And this is a way to pay for it in its own capacity. That's my point.
My viewpoint is I'm more about enforcement than revenue generation. And I just don't see charging people fifty cents as being a terribly productive thing for the city. But I wanna talk about, my situation is a nightmare on West Main Street, especially since the dispensaries, you know, are flourishing in the summer, it's just horrible. And there will be people that will park, completely ignoring the fact that they got twenty-minute parking in front of their store. And they'll stay, I've had people stay there all day. I just wanna get it enforced. But I think thirty-five-dollar ticket is a much bigger deterrent than the fifty cents you're gonna charge someone to create revenue stream. And I'd rather see a thirty-five-dollar ticket, that person is not gonna do it again. But, you know, that's my, my thoughts.
I have the same problem, Michelle. Where we're at, we're a block away from the neck of the pot shop.
Yeah, exactly.
And so that part of commercial being narrow and very, you never see a parking spot within there and they're coming back to the three hundred block.
The other thing, it was something that Gabe did. He actually talked to the merchants and said, how much parking would you like to have in front of your store? And I said twenty minutes. And it used to be all two hours. And that was a step in the right direction. If there's any way of engaging, you know, store owners, you know, maybe Valaluna doesn't want twenty minutes because it takes more to serve a meal than twenty minutes. But Liquorstir is quick enough. I'm sure there are other people in that category too. I mean, your meeting's probably longer than twenty minutes, right?
Not very much more than an hour.
Anyway, that's my thoughts.
Well, I like a combination of both. I think we need enforcement, but I am for the paid parking where the tourism side comes in. Because we go to Manitou Springs regularly and they got the kiosk, you walk up, you put in a couple of bucks, you got two hours till a walk around that prints your ticket, you go on your dash. And I think that as tourism comes, it's something we definitely need to look at. And enforcement, both, but I know that we have an issue with the police officers. And I've always been of the mind, and it's not a popular ideal, that where the Opera House is, that building into terrace at some point, I think is an ideal spot for parking for our downtown area. If that opportunity ever came, I think that would be something that we utilize our whole downtown area. Because it's, we don't see nothing yet. When that peak opens up and everything else and the different events come, the amount of traffic in this town that we have now is gonna be nothing compared to what's coming. We gotta get ahead of this now, and we don't have a long period of time to figure it out.
Space to create is gonna be.
Well, space to create with all the tenants and everything else. I mean, you know, we have a year to get something in place to start dealing with this and our traffic situation's gonna be much worse. But I'm for metering and more enforcement, both. I think we gotta do something.
How would that work then? Anyone could park anywhere for two hours if they pay enough money?
Correct.
I mean, that's not gonna be popular with a lot of merchants.
Well, I know it's not gonna be popular, but what are the, I mean, what's the alternative? When nobody will even come downtown anymore because the traffic is so terrible and congested? That's a worse scenario. And I know it's not gonna be popular and not every decision we make here is a popular decision. And this one is, no matter what we decide, it's not gonna be a popular decision that we're gonna have to make. But we're gonna have to address this in one form or another. We gotta have more parking lots or put in some paid parking.
Can I make a comment? Right now, we have it to where you have a sign that states twenty minutes, but it's not enforced.
Well, I'd like to get it enforced, that's my point when I talk.
Well, the thing is though, is we don't have the resources right now because as Mr. Valentine stated, Mr., is it Sartori?
Sartori.
Sartori will get pulled away from doing some of these normal duties with a mechanism where you have.
What about the fines? Won't the fines pay for the enforcement?
They will, but he's not there to enforce the fines and it's a moot point. If we cannot enforce them because that person who is gonna be out there enforcing these things has to get pulled away for a dog call or for a civil standby or a bathroom.
I thought we talked about having a full-time person who would be funded, in my mind, from traffic tickets or from parking tickets.
And yet we don't.
We don't, but that's what we're talking about changing that.
So therefore, if you have a mechanism that brings in revenue to pay for one person, that's all that they do. And they go in and force tickets.
Better find Vishnu, we got more, Joe Su and Joe's. Will fund the enforcement. I, I'm just not in favor of working for as long as you want, depending on how many dollars those stuff into the kiosk.
So with the three new officers, are they already, they're not already hired, correct? Some of them?
There's, they have to go through the academy, they have to do a lot before we get them onboard.
And so one of the positions with the new four-wheelers that be running up and down the river and everything else, and I mean, we should be able to with the new officers onboard, once they're here, have some dedicated time for enforcement also. Along with patrolling, I mean, then do the river patrol, commercial patrol, main. That would probably be.
What about the community service officers?
That's a possibility. I think they're sworn for writing tickets.
They can do some tickets.
They can do some tickets.
Not all. They could do parking.
Parking is one.
Yeah.
You know, it's just a kinda point, being born and raised here all my life. And listening to what Carlos was just saying, would keep people that get upset by paying fifty cents. I know people would get upset to pay fifty cents an hour or whatever. I guarantee you, I guarantee you, I lived there for sixty-five years. There's people that barely get by now with certain incomes by prescriptions and stuff like that and grocery. They have a little, the city charging them apart. But I think our main trouble with all this is like Karen says, you know, we have a problem where employees are parking right there in front of those stores, just like the courthouse. You can't even do, courthouse, you know, is horrible up there. You're talking about parking these. What about these people are, I know Mike don't wanna hear this, but what about these people are disabled like I am? I can't walk sometimes. We have very few parking, disabled parking downtown.
And then that's, that's being abused too, Joe.
That is. You see cars in there that they're supposed to have their stickers or their plates. And there's another point, Michelle, I agree with her a hundred percent. If we could get this enforced, there would be a lot of the problems solved. Because there's some days I can't, you know, I go downtown and I can't find a place here to go to bank or whatever. But me, I could get around a little bit. But you get other people that, you know, are in wheelchairs or, you know, have, just crippled up and it's hard. So the problem is, I think Michelle hit the, you know, the head. The enforcement has to be made. An officer or somebody's gonna have to be hired to do this. Because if not, we're just gonna be spinning our wheels.
I can see right, two hundred dollars worth of tickets a day.
Well, absolutely. Even if that guy does get called away, that's Sartori too or Matt, gets called away, oh, he's okay, open all's parked there at ten o'clock this morning. Oh, I gotta go to a dog complaint. He goes back, he comes back and an hour and a half later, open all's still parked there. It's still enforced. So I think Michelle has it right on the nose, man. I mean, we have to do this because people ain't gonna go for those meters and they're not gonna go for no kiosk and nothing like that because, oh my goodness, I know it'll happen, so.
Just out of curiosity, Tom, you know, you're out on the street on this stuff and you're kinda deep in the bottom of this stuff. What are your thoughts?
What?
I put you on the spot here.
Yeah, no bad, thank you. I've seen it here. I'm not, I really don't know. That's a really good question, actually. I agree with everybody, that's the chicken way out of this. There does need to be more enforcement. There are spaces downtown for ADA compliance that are being misused, that's for sure. Some of them, if they're even marked and ADA cars are parking there, they're not, because of anything one specifically. There is a restaurant table in the middle of the parking in the sidewalk so that you can't open the door and get out of the car at the ADA spot. We're dealing with that one, we're working on that one. Meters are out, I'm sorry, they're just, no, we're not gonna do meters, I don't see that being an issue either. Perhaps the kiosks, like Russy said, I've been to Manitou as well and you have the spots where you can work and you put your tag in dashboard for two hours or three hours, whatever you wanna do. I don't know if there's a limit in Manitou, it's been a long time since I've been to Manitou. It's really gonna be council's decision, I think, and I hate to say it that way.
It is, I was just trying to see if anybody else has any.
We've really haven't had that much input in my office from citizens. I mean, we've had, the things we've had issues with are, most recently are the ADA spots. And we've taken care of three that I can think of right offhand.
Good.
The people said you can't, they're inaccessible, there's, you have an ADA spot that's marked and there's a tree like this. And we're like, well, that's goofy, why can't we do that? Whenever we had it, we went back and changed that, fixed it. Those are the biggest ones, I think.
I agree, you know, we need to control the parking up and down Main Street, especially at Commercial. Those are the two areas that seem to get the most, have the most issues.
Well, if I may, just for your knowledge, we have a request for bids out right now to mark all the city lots. And that includes putting ADA spots where they need to be, proper amount of ADA spots in the right places. So we're working on that as well, so that may be.
That was something they suggested in this report, even though it's ten years old, what they did suggest about making sure that your parking lots are striped correctly. Because a lot of times people will just overpark and take up extra space.
And so many of them are dirt, so it's kinda hard to paint the dirt.
So let's take a look at a couple of things that I, you know, we have, like I mentioned earlier about that, where the old dairy was. That's a possible place for additional parking. The other area would be this area on West Main Street to create a parking zone.
You mean across the town?
Right. Is that a better, yeah, it is, yeah. To create a parking zone up there. The other thing that I think it would be good, and maybe this, you know, don't wanna add more to your plate, Tom, but I guess to take a look at maybe the businesses downtown and how many of those businesses have parking available behind the Main Street area? And how many don't? And how can we accommodate those that don't? I guess that would be one way, and then we can identify those employers that have parking behind and talk to them and say, you need to start utilizing now. That's where the enforcement comes with them, now how do we do that? So I think that's kinda the key with that, is we're trying to start to develop a way to open up these parking places downtown. So that would be my recommendation and looking at developing these other two parking areas that are useful.
What about the Hughes number, the old building down there?
Hughes number?
The lots down there, that's, those are two huge lots that maybe we could really look at too. And that would kinda take a burden off, maybe off Commercial Street or something around in there, right?
Yeah. Because that area is.
That lot goes way back, I mean, Main Street all the way back, so maybe that would be, I don't know, that's just a thought.
That's a good idea.
You know, it did say in this that it would be, probably would be in the interest of, I mean, you can always hire somebody to do this study, but if you look at this study, it was what, seventy-seven pages long? It was kinda crazy. And it was mentioning in there that maybe the city could do our own study. And that's what I'm recommending in a sense, to take a look at these other two lots plus looking at all the areas that, you know, that are not being used, that have parking available already in the back and then how do we enforce them?
Save the city some money from doing it.
So that's my recommendation, but I feel this would be a start.
Maybe we could cut down on the yellow curbs. I know there has been some movement about that, but I think we have too many yellow curbs.
Well, sometimes they're replaced because of turning radius.
Yeah, no, I know, and those you can't, but I think there probably someone messes with those.
I agree with you there. I just think that, again, there's an opportunity to build some more revenue. This is a way to do it. If you wanna scalpel where some areas are twenty minutes only and then have higher enforcement in those areas, sure.
Well, maybe that's a good way of doing it.
And there's, there's nothing saying like this is the only way to do it. I mean, we, our whole room charter, we can determine something that's specifically for us. We don't have to go with what is done in this community or that community. I'm just saying that there's a way that we can build up extra revenue, so therefore when we have budget concerns again in the future, we say, hey, we've actually increased our budget by X amount of dollars and this program pays for the enforcement of it as well. So therefore you get the revenue coming in and the fines associated to it.
Well, my fear, and I'll just make this my last comment on the subject. My fear is that if you suddenly open up areas where just, I'm putting five dollars into the kiosk and now I can park for ten hours downtown, we're gonna lose sales tax revenues, I guarantee you. And that's the bigger, that's the bigger source of money. And, you know, I know what it's like when, when businesses essentially shut down because there is no parking. And that'll happen on Christmas Eve and I'm just, I feel like gnawing off my foot, you know, and it's just such a waste. And I hate to see that happen on those really high volume days. So I'll leave it at that.
But, you know, it's just that with everything that everybody's talking about, the amount of people that are gonna be coming into the community and just identifying available parking areas at this point in time, I think is a real critical factor. And maybe we could put some of this stuff in the back of our minds going forward. And if it comes to be that maybe we do need to utilize kiosks or whatever down the road, you know, that may be something, but I think for now, because what I feel right now is we wanna bring people into the community at the beginning so that they can, later on, maybe they'll wanna return. So just creating that atmosphere that we are opening the community to. So just creating that atmosphere that we are opening the community to, to visitors and people coming in and into our area.
If you look at that map Mike gave us, thirty minute parking is very, there's small amounts of that, but it's a two hour parking in like ninety-eight percent of downtown Trinidad. Why can't we cut that down to an hour? And when we cut it down to an hour, start enforcing it and see if we can get people to.
Or talk to the merchants, is what I have here. What would you have, twenty minutes or an hour?
Yeah, that'd be a good start too, that'd be something else to, and maybe not every, everyone, but randomly. The merchants to see, get, get their thoughts.
Two hours is a long time.
It's a long time. And then the, the main problem that we have is anybody who parks on Main Street for days on end.
Yeah, that's why I'd rather see the kiosk with the off-street parking. You know, if we're ever gonna do kiosks, don't allow people just to jam up Main Street.
So have the kiosks in the physical lots?
But, cause I think that's the way, like, yeah, exactly, there, there's your source of revenues. But it's not jamming up Main Street.
But then that, that does kind of conflict with what Karen was mentioning, keeping the retailers and their staff from parking right in front of their stores.
Oh, I think it'll never be able to, to change, unless you just make it all one hour parking. I'm not, I'm, I'm not as interested in harvesting fifty cents an hour from employees of the store. I'm interested in keeping Main Street bustling.
The, the traffic flow.
Just keep it moving, keep it moving. Off, off-street, you know, I think, I, maybe that's where the comedy people who wanna just walk up and down the street are all there.
Now, here's, here's the one thing that I, I know, I think you mentioned, Joe, somebody mentioned that the big area that, the one area that seems to be a real obstacle is around the courthouse. You know, you go up there and it, I mean, they all park right in the front. You know, rather than using the municipal parking lot up on the tops, I think kinda talking to the county commissioners to have their employees park maybe in the municipal park. And then again, if that municipal parking lot up there was striped properly, maybe we can get a few, a few extra courts.
I don't think it's striped.
It's not striped at all right now. Right, well, during this study and everything, we had that option of using that lot, and now with the police department, we've got a lot of those vehicles in there, and so that's taking up some of the spots.
I think just doing the inventory of possible parking areas.
Exactly, that's what I, I would go back to the inventory, we, we do have some inventory already. Things have changed since two thousand nine, Commercial Street, uh, we actually reduced some of the parking by doing the bump outs. So we, we can do that, I'm hearing enforcement as a main thing. I can do a, have staff do a brief analysis on, okay, how many spots are in, in the red areas? And if, if we had parking there, say, every spot was used six hours a day, I don't know, or eight hours a day, and then see if we got fifty cents for every hour, how much would it really generate for us? And, and just, it's, it's gonna be, yeah, so. Um, but with it, there's also probably some enforcement, more enforcement because the kiosk is tracking rather than an officer going up and down, up and down, up and down. He could just go to the kiosk and say, okay, these license plate numbers, their time's up and they're still here, ticket, I don't know. So, well, you know, I think there's a lot more discussion to be had on this, but I think that's a start.
Okay.
All right, let's go on to, I have two plastic bags. Now and there is another one. Exactly. This is to start the discussion there. Another start. Again, I don't know, I suppose it was taken away, but there were some good, uh, statute, uh, ordinances from Breckenridge, Steamboat, I don't think Empress was in place, but they, they're looking at it. I'm looking for discussion on whether we use staff time to, to move forward with this. Cause it's, it's a big issue. And it's a big issue with, you can ask Tom, the biggest issue at the health department has out at the landfill is windblown trash. Well, the windblown trash is usually these bags. So, you know, it's an issue and how do we do this? I anticipate it's gonna take some community meetings, it's gonna take us to talk to the stores, to the major stores that use these bags to develop something, but this is to open the discussion. And then just to start the discussion, one of the things that I read is that, of course, I, I looked through, you know, some of those that you sent us. And, I mean, they have gotten, to, to some extent, I believe they've kinda gotten carried away in everything that they list and the do's and the don'ts and the whys and the white hots. And I guess I'm always of the opinion is, okay, we gotta stay within legal legality range. But at the same time, we need to be as simple and as straightforward as we possibly can. Because the more you confuse the issue, the harder it is to, there again, go back down to enforcement. So that's kinda what I read with some of the communities that are doing this now. Cause I mean, I, I read one, it was just like, they had this, myriad of.
Art procedures.
That's why I say the staff are to do all of that.
Exactly.
Incentivizing the.
Cheryl's not here, so we'll put it on her. Audrey.
Audrey's not here. They talked about the back, incentivizing back the, the stores for them to do this. Anyway, let's go ahead and start this discussion. Karen, why don't you?
I'd like, is, I'd like input from staff, is it a big problem? Is it a problem we need to address right away? What do you think?
Like I said, um, it is a big problem at the landfill. Uh, it is a big problem. If you look over here at, uh, Holy Trinity's Field, or you're on that fence sometimes, it's all plastic bags. If you come down, uh, the highway from Walmart, there's all these plastic bags. It's, it's littering, it's tough, and it seems like the stores, you know, if you let them bag it, they'll put one item in every bag and get, you know, it's like, ah, give me three items in a bag at least. So there's a lot of those issues, and I don't know if Tom wants to expound on the landfill issue.
I would agree with what Mike's saying, I mean, it's, the landfill is, it's windblown trash. I mean, it's just stuff, it's plastic bags, some paper, um, but mostly the plastic. And it's just, it's just our society right now, we're a throwaway society. And like Mike says, you go to, if they're gonna start charging you per bag, I can see, you know, they'll be putting one item in each bag, and you're gonna have sixty bags to walk out the door with. I mean, it's, just, that's exaggeration, of course, but still. I would like to see some type of recycling, the more deposit type situation. But right now, of course, recycling is a moot point, there's just not any market for it. Even though they say there is, they're not, they're not. Excuse me.
No, no, that's okay. We need, we need viewpoints here.
I'm somewhat encouraged when I go to the, the two main stores in Manitou and Walmart. Cause if you look at their recycled boxes that they have, those are always jammed with recycle, recyclable bags. And then I noticed at Safeway, they're really pushing those reusable carry. They, they've got them all over the store. I, I mean, it's a great idea, but my only, my only drawback on this is, we're, to me, we're not an affluent community. I, I would shudder to think if we did something to increase somebody's grocery deals now over and above what they're paying right now. I mean, you know.
When you say, when you say both rip before with the, with the parking fees.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, you know, you can see the, the community, we're not a real, we're a real class mostly, but I can't see it, us doing that if it's gonna cost the citizens more. I think maybe if, you know, I think we need to talk to the big, the two big stores for sure and see what their thoughts are on doing paper as opposed to plastic.
Well, you know, just, I didn't know, yeah, and, uh, one thing that I didn't know or read is that, uh, Walmart, they already are doing this in a lot of their stores.
I know.
They've ordered a lot of information.
So what are, what are they doing?
They're, they're charging that, whether it's five cents, ten cents, or whatever it is.
Well, I, I can see where you're coming from on, on the fee structure and to impose a hardship. But one of the interesting things that Breckenridge has done with their fees that were being charged is they were using that money to give back, to give bags out to their people in the community. So they were getting these reusable bags. And I remember one of the things that you said a while back, that really resonated with me, is that we need to be reusing. Recycling aspect is maybe not so good, but the reusable, is a re, reduce, reuse, and recycle. And if we can get two out of those three, I think that's a good start.
Right.
And if you can have a fee structure which goes back into the program itself in terms of education, like you wanted to do with kids, et cetera, and talking about recycling, if we can do that with everybody, where we create a program, just like they have done in Breckenridge, where they get people educated about, why don't you use this? Why do you only put one item in this plastic bag when you could put several? Things to that effect. Um, I think it's a good start, and also it's gonna help alleviate a lot of waste. Steamboat Springs completely just did away with plastic bags from their larger, their four large retailers. They still allow for other smaller retailers because mom and pops, that's what they can afford to buy at Sam's Club when they're buying supplies. So they have given concessions to them and then latitudes. But for the major ones, I mean, and honestly, the thing, the thing that sparked this is when we did the river cleanup. And I picked up so many plastic bags, and I don't think it's from people that are, were living in that area because this area we were at was really not hospitable for campsites. It just happened to be whatever would blow in the wind and it got caught in all this brush area. So with that being said, if we want to, again, change a culture of how we are towards our community, this is a tool that can be utilized. Now, I'm not saying we're gonna go exactly by one community's way, we can take bits and parts to see if this would be scalped specifically for Trinidad. And it doesn't have to be convoluted with a ton of legalese, but I think the pertinent issues need to be in there where if we choose to say go with a complete ban, we lay it out there. If you wanna do a fee structure for plastic bags, which Breckenridge had done in twenty thirteen and just recently, they went back to the table and said, we need to charge more because it's really not imposing a hardship on our community. People are just paying that ten cents per bag, and, and when they self-checkout, they just load them up even harder on their bag. You feel? So as a result of them trying to get people to reduce the amount of plastic bags, they're just accommodating for it with the extra ten cent per bag. And that's why they've raised it now to twenty-five cents a bag. And that, I think, would be more of a hardship imposed on people who otherwise couldn't afford it. But again, they also used that money to go towards their local residents to give them out reusable bags. They tried to give them the tools, so that way they didn't have to get charged. But again, it's a very touristy community, so this charge is imposed on a lot of people that go up there that stay their first ski weekends or summer adventure, whatever it is that they do. And then the locals are not really imposed that hardship because they're given a bag as part of the fee structure that the other people are paying for. So I think that there's ways that we can scalpel this, but ultimately, my thoughts were is keeping this crap out of our community's brush and landfill and, because it doesn't break down. It takes hundreds of years for plastic to decompose, and what happens to it? It gets shredded. And when it gets shredded, it ends up in the river, it gets into our ecosystem, it gets into the fish that I like to go after. And that, I mean, I've gutted a few fish that had plastic in them. And it's weird, it's like, I don't wanna eat this now, it's not what I wanted to do. And, um, we're trying to build a riverwalk in an area that's gonna be utilized by new people who are in the tourist and recreational industry, and we don't wanna be that trashy river. So it's a thought that I had to where we can try to reduce and reuse, since we don't have the recycle aspect. Think two out of three in bed, cool.
I agree with much of what Spind said. And I looked at the Steamboat Ordinance too, and I like the fact that it didn't impose regulatory burdens on small businesses. You know, that's part of your introductory comments here. I mean, I cannot imagine getting audited for the dynamite collect of a plastic bag. It's just, it, it, you know, I understand that the, probably, I would guess two-thirds, if not more, maybe eighty-five percent, but the bags are coming from those two stores. So I would focus on enforcing that if we can. And whether it's a dinah bag or whatever, kinda get there and, you know. I'm sure they're not gonna be too thrilled about the, the dinah bag either, but maybe as you say, Walmart's already got programs.
They're gonna be across the state of Colorado, from where I live, and they're already using that.
But I feel strongly on exemptions for small businesses and minimizing staff time, uh, collecting this money, so.
I agree totally, I couldn't agree more with exactly what you said. But this time we gotta start taking some measures and we're gonna have to deal with these bags.
I agree.
And if it's still a fee per bag, then that, that'll be the way. I think we definitely need to get representatives from Safeway and Walmart in here and bring them in as part of this discussion. What are they looking at doing, see if they have a program, and if not, let them know this is what we're looking at doing if you're not doing anything. I think that's a good place to start, but we're gonna have to do something. First of all, sitting on council here, you know, I, I get kinda frustrated at times when I hear people compare our little town with Breckenridge and Vale and Manitou Springs and all this other kinda catastrophe that's going on. We're Trinidad, we're Trinidad, guys. We're old enough to make our own decisions, we're old enough to look at other things. We're not Vale, we're not Breckenridge, those people are money, money, money. We're Trinidad, okay? So what I'm trying to get at is that we have to come up with a, with a solution there. I don't think we have to follow Breckenridge as an example, I don't think we have to follow Montrose or whatever. I think we have to follow what the people of the city, Trinidad, so. Ever since I sat on this council, I've been worried about this landfill. I worry about it for getting fines every month because we don't have the proper cover, and now it's occurred, we have bags flying around. And it is a problem. So we gotta realize, like I said before, this isn't Breckenridge. I'm sick of hearing about Breckenridge, I'm sick of hearing about Vale, this is Trinidad. So we, as a council, as a city staff, we're very capable, very capable, and our city attorney, making our own decisions. If we look at something and say, hey, just like, like Rusty said, we have to sit with the two major, Walmart and Safeway, and get together and see what they, they, they plan to do. And if they don't do something about it, then we have to, as a council, and as a city staff, and as a city that's led to something about it. So leave it in that house, let's make our own decisions and talk, we're in about Breckenridge, Vale, and they'll, they'll manage their own ways, not us. Thank you.
You know, I, I hear what you're saying, Joe, but at the same time, one of the things that I look at, and I like to look at, what other communities are doing so that we don't wanna reinvent the wheel? Sometimes we can pull something from here, something from here, something from here, to make it work for us. Or maybe none of it works for us. And I think that's, uh, that's one thing I, I hate, I always hate to do, is try to reinvent the wheel all the time. And like, you're right, yeah, we're not Vale, we're not any other community larger than this, but I think that, what are we trying to do here? Are we trying to save our local environment? I guess that's what we really, that really is the genesis of this whole thing. Or are we trying to create a revenue stream for doing something else? To me, it's more, uh, saving our local environment from all the bags, like you're saying, Joe, all the bags that are blown around and they're all, I mean, just, it, it's ridiculous of all the bags that get blown around all over. But I think that we need to come up with some sort of a, a reasonable amount that people maybe will take a little bit better stock in disposing of these bags. Instead of just let them go away, you know, just, maybe they will go ahead and use the reusable bags. And I think that the, not only the larger, uh, businesses in town, but I think we also need to hear from some of the smaller businesses, cause, uh, I know when I work at the lumberyard every week or every month, Cause, uh, I know when I work at the Lumber Yard every week or every month, we bought bags and we had, you know, the thousand bags. And then at the end of the month, we used all, I mean, they were all gone. And that's, I, I think maybe instead of us going out and auditing, hopefully that we can have some self-auditing that goes on. To like, let's say you buy, you know, five hundred bags every month. And hopefully that maybe, uh, there might be some people that are gonna cheat on it. But at least where there's some of that revenue that comes back by you self-auditing yourself to say, okay, I bought five hundred bags, I had to replenish them. And I, rather than saying, oh, we're gonna audit you every, every month, so. But I think these, there's, there's some ways, I think, that we can do this to where it makes sense. But it boils down to, we need to try to save and, and make our local environment look better like you're talking about. Cause I've been involved in this river cleanup with Comcast Care Days and the Trinidad Community Foundation for, I don't know, the last ten, twelve years. And I can't tell you how many trash bags I've picked up in the backstreets, on, out of the river. I pulled out so many bags just out of the river that, like you said, they're floating down the river somewhere. They're everywhere. And it's, it's kind of disgusting. It really is. It is. That, yeah, that's, it is.
Well, I think it's just the nature of the way the bag is made. It's made to
Blow away.
Blow away.
Right, right.
I think that maybe we, we kind of get an idea of what maybe we can do with this, Mike.
Okay, well, I appreciate, this, this is the discussion we needed to have. I, I get the sense that we need to kind of take a better look at it. So now we'll take it, staff will take it step farther and start contacting the big stores, the, the small stores.
The S I stores.
Some, some public input also.
And that'll probably re, re-help our landfill to cut down on the, on land power with the landfill and fill in the, you know, filter and stuff, so.
If there, if I could please, and, and I just wanna say, if there was some kind of way in which they, the big stores especially, could offer like financial incentives. As you were talking, it occurred to me, I have like the world's largest collection of reusable bags. Like you go to Vitamin Cottage in Bello and you get reusable bags. I, I have dozens of them. And I never use them. I mean, I use them at Vitamin Cottage, but I don't use them at Safeway or Walmart. Just the permanent reusable bags. I, I never do. And I think, I, I mean, I don't know, I look kind of silly walking into the store with reusable bags. But if people have financial incentives somehow, you know that Walmart and Safeway are spending a fortune on those damned plastic bags. And so if they're, and also, you know, these ordinances, as I was reading them and going over them, a number of these mountain towns, you would go in and they would say, okay, well, will you pay a nickel or a dime for a paper bag? And I understand a lot of people would not wanna do that, but I would. But if I had five bags of groceries, I wouldn't mind paying fifty cents to have my groceries put in, you know, five paper bags. So that is an option they give you and, and you can, you know, elect to, to have that option. But one of the problems is, is that everything is self-checkout now. So i- if you go to Safeway and you wait for someone to check you out, you're gonna be waiting a long time. And it seems like the only thing you can do is go, you know, put everything you have in the plastic bag. So, um, I, I was gonna say one other thing, and that is, I, I'm sorry that the pages aren't numbered, but in our materials, there is, uh, an item that says legal issues. And there are four communities, Avon, Aspen, Tellyrion, Prescott Butte, that have passed outright prohibitions, uh, or bans on plastic bags. That doesn't make much sense, especially for a community like Trinidad. But there is the state statute on point that says that local communities are not supposed to do that. And there may be an issue. I know you're not talking about the right prohibition.
Just to mention something real quick that I can interject is that right now, uh, the Colorado Municipal League, I guess, they are looking at this from the state legislative side, legislative side.
Right.
Because right now, it says, I guess there's a ruling somewhere that a community cannot impose a cost on plastic bags, but it's not being enforced right now. So they're looking at it.
It's in committee.
It's in committee right now.
Right. So coming this spring, they're gonna probably bring something forward through the center of the house to try to alleviate those issues for communities because it's not just here, it's not just in Breckenridge or Vail. It's happening in Denver. It's happening all over. I mean, I'm not trying to emulate any of these little mountain communities. I want Trinidad to be its own autonomous place, but at the same token, a good idea is a good idea.
Right, right.
And if it saves keeping our landfill in a healthier state, I'm all about it.
You got it. And if, if people were to, you know, be told that there was going to be something like a five cent per plastic bag charge assessed, and, you know, it's going to start happening, and then that would be an incentive to bring all these bags in. And then if they don't have their own reusable bags, they can buy them or, you know, get them for free. I don't know if Safeway or Walmart will do that, but for a limited time, get free reusable bags. And then they bring them in and they don't have to pay the fee for the plastic bag. I, I don't know.
Another thing too, that I, I read is that in some communities, they not only impose a fee on plastic, but also on paper bags.
Steamboat's doing that.
So that would be something else for discussion. And the, the last part of this would be that the community will want to know, the revenue generated from this, what are we gonna use it on? So I think that would be something that we can get some recommendations from.
That is a very good question.
Get some recommendations from, uh, staff as to what they're watching.
Because Aspen currently is in a lawsuit. With the Union Foundation or something like that, the Aspen, I can get that information for you. I wrote it down about a month ago. And it was all about how they were spending the fees. So I can get that information too.
Well, it seems like if the, the income that is generated is rationally related, you know, I mean, you spend it on something like free permanent reusable bags or, I don't know what's it. Something that is an incentive for everyone to save money and, and, you know, take your own bags in. The other part of that could be is that maybe a certain percentage could go back toward purchasing reusable bags. The other part of that would be to help us, that maybe, I mean, it's gonna be very minimal, the cost to what we have to do with our land. It's directly related. So, but there's some other things that maybe you guys can come up with.
Thank you for that discussion. Okay. Item number three, Trinidadian venue change discussion, Mike.
So counsel, I've invited Chair, he's your chair, and Tom are here to discuss this. If you recall, uh, they came before you and said they're looking at changing the Trinidadianos from Central Park and moving it downtown and using the entertainment district to try and enhance that. And adding three more events, uh, weekends, and I'll, I'll let them speak to that. But, um, as always, there's, there's costs involved. And, uh, the initial request was, uh, thirty thousand from tourism and sixty thousand, if possible. Try to find that, if possible, from the city of Trinidad. We talked about that, but we know that there's an issue with that, based on our ordinances and how marijuana is, how we're allowed to use it. Cause that's where this generally comes from, is from the marijuana, and, and we've got a cap on that. Uh, so that request, but, uh, they also spoke to, well, we can move forward and we can do ticket sales. So without putting words in their mouth, uh, you guys could have to come forward with a presentation, but kind of.
But like, uh, Mike was saying, if there are no ticket sales, then actually we're gonna need a little more rather than, uh, be able to put it on and for it to be free. With, uh, the smaller inputs, say thirty thousand from the city, then we would definitely be charging for tickets. Right now, we actually have an offer out to Los Lobos for the July, uh, performers. And if we do con- contract with them, that could be an event. That perhaps would be the only event that we would ticket. Cause I'm sure they have a pretty huge draw, as big as any of the headliners that we've, we've had at the Blues Fest. And, and then the other events could be free. But either way, uh, you look at it, we can charge for the July event. We can charge for Saturday only on the August events or, you know, however it's gonna work out depending on what kind of funding we do receive. And, uh, pass that around. That's our first ad that we've, uh, will be coming out in Mountains and Mesa's magazine. We have the inside back cover on it. And, uh, so we are going ahead one way or the other. We just are not sure how it's all gonna play out, if we will have to charge for tickets or not. And, uh, if you look at that piece of paper I gave you, it shows that, uh, in August last year, there was a hundred and sixteen thousand dollar bump in revenue from the previous month. If we have events in June and July as well, I would expect to see, uh, similar figures.
Jerry, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
How do you take it something on Main Street?
Well, we, we've discussed that and, uh, I think I mentioned that the last meeting, we had about a hundred and eighty volunteers this year at the Blues Fest. We have enough volunteers, we can shut down downtown if we want to, uh, in any way, shape, or form that we want to. But we, we have discussed it to where we would make, uh, the area we completely shut down a little bit smaller than the area that's shut down for the entertainment center. So we would just go about a block in each direction, so there would only be three points of access. That's all we would have to cover. And of course, behind the stage has to be blocked off completely.
Good. Thank you. Questions, Ken?
So when you say pre-fest, party, and then blues fest, are you gonna have two down? Or are you gonna have the blues fest at the park again?
No, they'll both be downtown.
Everything's gonna be downtown?
Everything will be downtown. And just like always, we'll have the pre-fest party on Friday night, and then maybe that will be Saturday. The only real difference is we'll be doing four to ten on Saturdays, on Saturday instead of six to ten like we probably do for pre-fest.
Have you, have you figured out like the logistics for that one weekend in August? Because if you're gonna set up on Friday and Saturday, will people have access to downtown?
No, it'll be shut down from
Friday night?
From Friday night through Saturday night.
Um, first and foremost, I think it's a great idea to be downtown. I think you do draw more people into, to the vendors there as opposed to having to bring in other vendors from wherever they come from for the Central Park venue.
Correct.
Uh, I can see where you're looking at it from, you're gonna spend less money. You're not having to deal with the liquor and licensing and tips courses, et cetera. But I just wanna ask you, and I have to ask this, is we did make some accommodations for the park specifically for Blues Fest. And now we're, we're not gonna have those needs anymore. We, we did that. How are you going to tell us and the rest of the community it's gonna be better? It's gonna be better for the, the vendors downtown? A, a real chamber of commerce kind of movement to, uh, and incentivize those local people down there to where they wanna always have it in their front yard?
Well, if you went to the first event, that was downtown, you'll see there was quite a bit of people. And then the second event, there was even more. So you had all Main Street, most commercial filled up.
And pre-fest has grown. Uh, first year we had it downtown, we had about fifteen hundred in attendance. Second year was over two thousand, and last year was over three thousand. People, and I think I mentioned this last time we were here too, the comment, the, most of the comments we've received was people liked it better downtown because number one, it was at night. Number two, it was, you know, in downtown, and they can go to the different bars. Any bar that they, that they want to, they can go to and, and appreciate it. When we had it at the park, most of our crowd would either come early and leave early, or come late and leave late. Why, you know, why bother having to, uh, something from noon until almost ten o'clock at night? If people aren't gonna really enjoy it. Cut off the, you know, make the prime time hours, the ones that, uh, we focus on. And, uh, you know, and besides that, uh, Central Park has just simply become too big of a job. Uh, if, you know, we had more volunteer crews who were competent enough to do all, everything that's involved, that would be one thing. And then another issue, a big issue for us, our big VIP tents went up almost two thousand dollars in price. And, uh, it's just not gonna happen anymore. Plus, uh, Grand Rattle, I'm sure you've heard, sold all their equipment, so those are no longer available to us either. So there, there were a lot of issues.
So by bringing it downtown, all of those costs are gone. You have two big main event tents, which were, what, seven thousand?
We, we paid six thousand last year, maybe seven, eight hundred if we were to rent it for twenty twenty. Uh, we paid, we paid out over thirteen thousand to Grand Rattle. There's twenty thousand dollars right there that, uh, we won't be spending.
And also on the stage, to rent the stage, and, uh, it was, it's twenty-five thousand to rent the stage.
We, yeah, our stage was a little over twenty thousand, but for three events, we figured that's gonna be close to that again, or probably a little bit over that for three different days. Four different days, actually.
Can I ask you a question? Have you ever thought of, um, partnering with other boards and commissions in town? Like the historic Main Street or to try and pull this off if you're gonna have it downtown? And have you tried to give grants from, from any place for this?
We've looked quite a few places for grants.
There's no grants available.
Well, I'm sure they're probably something somewhere, but I haven't found anything yet.
You know, the, that, and it's not even just the Blues Festival. What, what the best part about the entertainment district is there's only three or four or five establishments. All the people that wrote your letters of, of support, or they're the ones that make, making the money. Are they contributing anything bad to you?
Well, they do contribute some, especially, uh, you know, on pre-fest. And it'll be more so this year, the way it's set up. But on pre-fest, we send bands to these different places for drinks, for dinner, whatever, and that's usually all common.
Okay.
Even, even the motels, they're, they're, they're a part of it, you know, they have so many rooms.
I have already spoken with several vendors downtown and told them our new plans and they're more than eager to be sponsors.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, they're very eager to come on board with sponsorships and, uh, like I say, and I, but I don't think it just, you know, it doesn't just benefit like, uh, Moose's or the, or Briggs or the flexes that have bars. I know Curly's was very busy last year, uh, before the festival on Friday and, and Saturday. I think she closed on Saturday, but Friday I wish she had a big day. Another, uh, I talked to one business that had a booth at the festival, and they said they'll never have a booth at the fest again cause they make more money just staying open downtown, so.
Even, even the motels, um, it's unbelievable how much on those weekends, how, how their rates go up higher. And so when your rates are higher, your, your taxes are higher. So you can imagine what you're, you're generating off all of the motel rooms that are in Trinidad.
Now, holidaying is over three hundred dollars for a room on these first weekends.
And that's the only weekend that they're not hiring? So.
Uh, another thing that was, that I brought up with Mike and Audra, and Audra seemed to think it might be a good idea was if the city purchased the stage. And, uh, did you get that email I sent to you?
I did, I did. It wasn't in the packet because I got it today, but, uh, if you wanna pass it out, uh, it's a mold stage.
Take a look and see what you think. I just got this email yesterday. It's from, uh, soundbroker.com, they broker stages and, you know, equipment and whatnot. It's a hundred and seventy-five dollar stage, or a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar stage. It's a hundred and seventy-five dollar stage, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar stage, grand sale. It's for sale, used for forty-one million dollars. Something like that would be a great investment for the city. It could be precise for Trinidad and Adelaide. It could certainly be used for Santa Fe Trail Days. It could be used for any kind of event the city was gonna produce.
I don't know what it is. Is it a mold?
Yes, yeah. It's, it looks just like a small trailer, folds up like an eighteen wheeler type rig and
you lock it up?
And you take out the remote control and push a few buttons and it all opens up.
Transformer?
Yeah.
Look at transformer.
Well, you know, something like that would help us cut down our costs. And like I say, when you have the grand opening for space to create, this thing pulls behind a pickup, pull it right upside up.
Even at needed events, the county uses needed events, but it's, it's like a one-time investment.
So when I printed, I guess I hit the, I was scrolling through the pictures. You can see the picture there of what it looks like unfolded in a stage kind of a position.
That's a better photo. I mean, it's more, well, sorry. I'm looking for black color commentaries.
Brooke, have you talked to any of the merchants on Main Street or Commercial Street about being, having the downtown shut from Friday, early evening?
I've spoken with several of them.
What's the reaction you get?
They're thrilled to death.
So what area would be covered?
We would have, it would be pretty much the same as it was for pre-fest. For none of us down to Brakes and then down a block on Commercial Street.
Okay. So the three dates you're talking about are Jim twenty-seventh, July twenty-fifth, and then Friday and Saturday, August twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. Is that correct? Okay. And you're looking for sixty thousand dollars from the three?
That would
To do all three, which is an alternative.
It's left the forty-one.
Thirty from tourism every, every day.
Right.
They do it if they sponsor it and then the initial ask was sixty, correct, Jerry?
Correct. Like I said, with thirty thousand, we could probably just get away with charging the tickets for one event. Like I said, we do the, the one weekend. Actually make the most fun, most revenue one and then the rest would be free.
That's interesting.
But that's twenty grand per event.
So if the stage was purchased, then it would take less money for you to put this on?
It wouldn't take a lot less because out of that twenty or twenty-five thousand that I'm estimating for stage costs, that includes stage, P A, lighting, stage crew, a lot of things. But it would certainly cut down our costs probably by at least ten thousand dollars a year.
You know, when I resigned, I was saddened with the thought that the fest could possibly go away. And I like the ideal of what y'all would come up with and what you shared with me. We haven't talked a lot about this, but I think a key thing to make this successful and what's exciting is everything else that's going on in town. It would be nice to see it work in conjunction with S C R T, some of these gravel grinder events and everything to make a fence for people to spend three or four days in town. I think it's a, a great ideal and I hope there's a way we can get this worked out and make it happen. I'm excited for the fest to still be going on, Jerry.
I agree. I would definitely like to get in conjunction with whatever biking events are gonna be occurring in town. And as far as S C R T goes, it seems to me they kind of grumbled a few years ago when we had the pre-fest downtown. But then they stopped grumbling when they realized their Sunday after the pre-fest was their biggest day they had all year. So I think the same thing's gonna happen. On the weekends when there's a, a pre-fest, if S C R T has a mat bay that day, they're gonna make tons of money.
Joe, you have any other questions for us?
Yeah, that's all I have.
You know, when I first
Go ahead.
You know, when I first heard about you guys doing three events, I thought that was really good idea. Cause that's one thing I've heard in the community is why can't we have other type of music other than just blues, which I think is an excellent idea. And of course, like I said, I, I really believe that no event should be, I mean, we have the pre-fest, which is free. That's great. Everybody crowded out. But other, if we're doing this, I believe that people should pay to go to these events. Typically, when you go to an event, you're going to expect to pay something. So I think it wouldn't hurt to
Ten bucks?
Yeah, whatever.
Three thousand people, but it's thirty right there.
I think it'd be a good idea to
If you look at a ticket for the Blues Fest all day, it's forty dollars or seventy dollars for, for the event per day. If you go to a concert out of town, you're paying a hundred and some dollars per concert. And the, the, the brands that Jerry has been booked for this, I mean, they're, they're all over the country. They're, they're even international now. They're making more money in Europe than what they're making in the United States. This is where they're all born. A couple of the bands that were there that I had talked to, he was, he was going to, he had like seven events put together and he was here. I mean, and you think about, you think about the quality of entertainment that, that is, that can come down here and play for a trip.
One note of interest, I don't know if you guys have seen the Grammy nominations that just came out recently?
Yeah.
Our headliner last year is nominated for a Grammy and our headliner the year before last is also nominated for a Grammy.
Now, this, this forty-one thousand for this stage, is there any movement on that to offer them? And is all, that also delivered to us here or do we have to go get it?
I would imagine we'd have to go get it.
And where is this located at?
Yeah. Well, what I read on there is, I believe it's in Virginia.
Since I gotta draw this, everybody wants to go off.
So I would just say with that, I mean, it's an awesome deal off the internet. I'm sure our finance department might cringe if we don't go through some kind of procurement process for that. So we need to get actual bids and stuff. I appreciate Jerry giving that to us, but it's not something we can just, like, give them the credit card on. We, we've got our procurement procedures that we have to follow.
So I really think the, the biggest thing is, going back to my second question, I guess in a second, is that I think that there needs to be a cost. Because we're, we're getting, we've got three different events. We're looking at three different groups of people that are going to be coming. Now, I mean, surely locals will probably go to all of them. And some of them may double over anyway and might go to all of them. So, but I, I think there needs to be a cost to
Well, if I have in three different types of music, of course, we're trying to appeal to three different groups of people as well.
So you're just trying to do an estimate of like how many tickets you would like to sell or what the possibility is on it? Or is it just because it's, I know you know what the figures are for the Blues Fest, but you don't know what the figures are for these others.
No, yeah, and I, and I couldn't estimate anything like that until we've actually signed someone. You know, it's the artist that's gonna be the draw, not just the event. But, but another thing to go towards paying or not paying, if you go to some of the smaller, well, even Colorado Springs has a huge agenda of concert events during the summer that are all free. Woodland Park holds concerts that are all free and it's all about drawing tourism. If you want tourists to come to town, have a free event, have something for them to do. When they, when they go to the matinee at the S C R T, then that night they can go to the Blues Fest or to the Americana Fest or whatever it happens to be. Same way with the bike rally. They go out on a bike rally all day long. That night they've got entertainment downtown. I, I just think it's a huge draw.
The other thing that we could even do with this, I mean, we can use it for our own use here in town, but there might be other
Rental?
Rentals that we could maybe do. How much of that's doable? We can do that or not?
The permit fee could be a rental. Cause you're gonna have to have people get a permit if they wanna utilize it. And because you're gonna have to make sure that they don't damage it. So that's gonna have to be covered by an insurance kind of thing. And we can't just say we're gonna let you use it for free 'cause you brought up the idea, but then we're gonna charge these other people. So there's gonna have to be a non-discriminatory kind of policy implemented because therefore everyone has the ability to use it, but yet it's still
Well, the better fee you give them, the better bill I'll give you on the stage.
But I mean, I think it's, I think it's a great thing to have as a community asset, just like the trolley is. This would be another great thing. If you wanted to put something in Miners Memorial Park when you have another Louis Teckus Day or something like that, you have the ability to throw up something where people can speak in the downtown area.
And you own it now and you're not spending the twenty-five thousand every year.
The other thing is to Mike is where, where would the money come from? It's a good question.
Well, Audra did mention that it could come from several sources because it was something, an asset for the city.
Yeah, I think it was mentioned that, you know, in conjunction with the Main Street group, they have a little bit of funding if they wanted to put that in there. I cringe to say the, you know, the marijuana funds because everybody is coming forward. I've got, might as well say it now. We need to have a work session on all the requests because there are a lot. And we've got a lot going on and we've got our own projects, the community space and, you know, art space. We've gotta finish that. But anyway. So I don't think the stage would be a, well, it may, a capital.
That's what has to
If, if, if it's mobile, I don't know if we can do that.
For insurance, it's inland marine. I don't know whether it'd be friggin' counting.
Right.
Inland marine.
That's what they call mobile.
Yeah, so thank you.
I'd say, you know, just take a look and see where those funds could come from. And I would recommend that if there's some way that you can move forward with this is to look at maybe generate, what kind of funds can be generated from selling tickets?
Even if we have one, one event band sponsored by the city like it is on the Friday night and then the other two events paid. And just like you give the pre-fest, it's sponsored by the city.
Cause I'm, you know, I'm real concerned. I'm sure all of the, all of Council Beer is concerned about, you know, sixty K for the events. And that causes a concern for me.
It goes against our policies.
Right. I'm, I'm of the mindset to say I'm willing to like look into this mobile unit and then maybe a portion of city sponsorship, you know, but I don't think the city, I don't think we can do that. So we just had a discussion earlier how we're trying to find other ways to generate revenue. And don't get me wrong, I see where your numbers are. But we have to have something that's now dedicated just to the downtown. Cause before we didn't have numbers that were for a two-day event. Now this is kind of changing that dynamic slightly. So I think we need a little bit of time under it before we can just say yes. I can see where definitely there's a corollary between this particular event and an increase in revenue in the sales. I think if we could really hone in on that particular way, it would be easier to justify an expenditure because it ultimately helps the bottom line of the sales tax revenue. That's my thought.
The other question is, these people have this unit out to sell it. Who else could buy it? Who, what other?
Well, anybody can buy it.
Now, that's what, that's my, that's a good question. So is this
If you wanna take a closer look, you can use that web address that is on there and
So how soon? Do we gotta move on this in the time? Cause you gotta the convention, you gotta go off the bid, you gotta, we gotta
Absolutely. And if you look, look on the thing, you can buy it outright for the price. You can make an offer or, you know, who knows? So I, I don't think it's gonna last long.
I think you're right.
But if there's one, there might be others in the country.
I'm sure there are, there are always others. I've looked at several of them on this, on this particular website.
So Mike, I think that, you know, you have your work and you could bring back to us. We have another discussion. Mike, I think we need to look at the revenue. Where it's gonna come from, where it's doable from, if it's doable at all.
But you know, I, I have to bring this up because last year we made two exceptions to our non-profits. We gave S C R T thirty and the reason we gave S C R T thirty is we gave the Blues Fest thirty from, from the marijuana money. Can't do that again. Absolutely cannot do that again. I think it's a five thousand dollar cap.
Twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five.
No, no.
Change the policy to
It's five. It was twenty-five and then we got hit up by, near by twelve. We had twelve requests.
Everybody was coming in for the maximum.
Yeah. And last year, that was in effect and we made an exception last year. So I don't know. We, we can't do that. We can't do that again. Two, the only way out would be the stage and use it as a community property. You, you just can't have control of it if it's possible, if it's possible. I had a, and this is the honest to God truth. I was talking to somebody after a meeting the other night that's on staff. And I was saying, I was asking this person about the finances of the city. She said, you know what? It's pretty hard for me to swallow. I mean, you guys spend money on statues or whatever else that we're spending money on. And I had to wait five years to get a statement. I mean, honest to God, that's what this, this person told me. And I'm sure she was exaggerating, you know. It was just for argument's sake. But we have to, we have to be really careful about how we're spending this.
The other thing, and I mean, I'm not trying to contradict that in any way, about five thousand dollars that you were saying, but that was particular toward the Blues Fest.
Right, but you can't, you're for, for the benefit of a five oh one C three for a nonprofit, just to give them the money that's out there.
Oh, what I was, what I was coming from was is that we have now a change of events.
Right.
That's what I was thinking about. I'm not sure that, this, this is all, this is all in consideration.
Well, it's three events. I, I agree with you.
Well, you might also concern on, consider the ROI.
Return of investment?
That's, that's, that's the bottom line here.
Right. And again, before it's, it's always been one night downtown, other day at the park.
Which is
This is changing the dynamic of that. So we really need to have some tangible numbers from data.
And I agree with you. You're gonna have to wait and see, but I'd be willing to bet with three events, our August event is still gonna pull in very close to what it did this year. And then with the other two events, it's, it's gonna be over the top, way over the top.
But they're gonna have to be well advertised and that's gonna cost money.
Did you see the ad that just went around?
I saw that.
Our advertising budget is not gonna change. It's gonna be the same. We still have national advertising for all the events. Instead of advertising one, we're advertising all of the events.
So let me ask you this, you know, it sounds like with this change of three different events, it's going to actually increase your bottom line. So maybe this first year, there's a higher cost to it. Now, do you anticipate that probably next year if you do the same thing, that you may have generated maybe not enough money to move forward so that you're not having to ask so much of us or whether
Yeah, that's kind of a wait and see.
Yeah, that's a wait and see. But you know, I'm just looking at it. It's, it makes sense to me because you're, if you're, like you said, your, your revenue that you're going to get out of the Blues Fest might be equal to what you've done last year, but you're gonna have, you know, a lot less expense.
Oh, I agree.
So then, so that, that event of yours is gonna be probably substantial.
If we charge
And we may be able to roll that over into the next year, the beginning of the next
If we charge for every event, we could probably do without city assistance. But why would you want that? Why would you not want the draw of a free event? Every hotel will be packed for every event. If we charge for them, we're gonna get, we're gonna get good attendance for the first two events. Well, most levels, I think we might actually get very, very good attendance for them if, if we do, if they accept our offer. The August event, we're still gonna have good attendance, but it's gonna be great. But if it's free, it's gonna be great. Just like the pre-fest used to, we used to have four or five hundred people at a pre-fest party when we charged for tickets.
I really believe that, I really believe that the events need to have some kind of fee. Now you can start off on the lower end for this year.
Yeah.
And then, you know, as years go by, that's exactly what has happened with the Blues Fest event. Those technical pieces have increased over a period of time. You have to start at the bottom somewhere, but I really still go back to my, that I think there needs to be a fee for entrance into the events.
Do we have anything in the entertainment district ordinance that states that it's always Do we have anything in the Entertainment District ordinance that states that it's always open to the public for free? I think that's something that we don't?
No.
Okay. Just wanna make sure that we don't have something that, because then we have to go back and change it. But if, but it's not, so that's good.
All right, I think I've heard kind of where things are at at this point in time, so you do a little more work for us. And we need to get some more consideration, give some more consideration to this. And Mike, I think you and staff have your work that you have to work on this, work it up on this.
FYI on your plastic problem? As the world takes some drastic steps, by 2050, there'll be more plastic in the ocean than fish.
I agree.
And the only way that it gets solved is if it's required. People aren't gonna volunteer, you're gonna have to make them.
On item four, has council given any other thought as to other work sessions that have been being considered?
I do, go ahead. You act like you were fixing to speak.
You spoke first.
Right.
You spoke before you...
So we did, there you go. We did attend the meeting with, on the marijuana, the new everything that's going on. Afterwards, I had a very interesting conversation with Ian Steve, who is Governor Paul's advisor on cannabis. This is something that the governor is really pushing for the tourism side and he was talking to me about possibly even a pilot program that could be looked at for this area. I would really love to do a work session with all of council and Mr. Downs and see if we could get them back down here and explore that some more.
Pilot program for what?
For the consumption clubs. He talked as far as advertising on billboards, he really elaborated a lot on this and the program that they're putting in place. So I think that would be something with the governor behind it and them talking about paying for a program like this for implementation and us being a pilot program, that it would be worth more discussion.
Do I understand correctly, and I'm so sorry I missed that event, but the governor is really pushing this? I heard, someone told me that Governor Paul's is really pushing for pilot programs for the consumption clubs and wanting Trinidad to really seriously consider being one of the venues for that. I mean, I know that's what you said, but specifically that is in the governor's mind is doing that. And whatever council thinks. I just heard that that was really being pushed.
And that's what, what's his name, Ian was saying when we were talking. So I think it's something worth looking at and hearing a little more details from them.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to, you know, listening, at least listening.
It's always nice when someone else wants to pay for a program for us.
Yeah.
So we don't have to have as much skin in the game, but yet we can have more of the benefits.
Well, if anything else, even if we don't go forward, at least give us whatever understanding has to... Right, what is involved?
They offered our rep, he lives in Canyon City, Hank, I believe? I can't remember the last name, offered to come down just for this to discuss all the nuances, do's and don'ts of the club and what's in the state statute now.
Is that our MED representatives?
Yes. Because with the, well, there's two issues. There's one, a consumption club, but also the delivery services in 2012. These are two things that are going to be, we're gonna be questioned by the community going forward. And I think, like I said, I'm not opposed to at least listening, so then when people ask us questions, we're...
We.
Well, unlike the program that they outlined, it answered the questions on how are they gonna survive in a consumption club with the sale of the product in the club with the limited amounts that they're specifying like they were talking about in the meeting? So that would answer our questions that we've always asked, well, how are they gonna survive? Are they gonna be able to sell the product on a limited scale? So I think it's worth visiting some more. It's another deal on our tourism, just now?
So I was gonna ask a question. This is before I got on council. I thought there was a moratorium on any new CPs for...
There are for, if I may, I'm sorry, I know you were directing that again, for retail marijuana stores. And this is a new license that they're allowing, they haven't allowed before the sale of marijuana in consumption clubs. But that's a new license type that I think passed the legislature this year that would be allowed.
So we would have to go back to the wow and determine how many would you want? We would have to, if we go and do something, how many we would allow the community? Where, what, if, and all the details. That would be the big thing.
And for this work session, I mean, maybe not, but it's some work session. We may wanna invite people from the retail marijuana industry. Let's see what they think, if they have like a location in mind, if it possibly be a collaborative effort.
Well, exactly, going back to what I was originally saying is my reason for listening would be so that when citizens ask questions, then we have some good answers for them. Because that's the big question that they're gonna have.
Right.
And one of the things that the retailer said at that last meeting we had here after it became legal, that they said that they didn't wanna have any consumption on their premises. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
We don't wanna have it on our premises. That causes too many conflicts.
Yeah.
You bet.
Well, I would bet a retail outlet would be interested in probably taking the reins and opening up a club separate. You never know.
Any other items that council is considering for...
I don't know if this is a work session item, but when Tara was here, there was discussion on opportunity zones. Is that something that I'm clueless on or we all clueless on?
We are clueless.
I think that was part of the comprehensive plan of 2017 where like Santa Fe Trail was an opportunity zone.
Because it's a real fine niche.
Yeah, it is defined and...
It's a complicated subject.
It definitely is.
Well, it's defined and from what I understand, this past summer when Cory Gardner was here, I was talking to him and I think there was some thought at the federal level that they might want to revisit, allow communities to revisit their areas of the opportunity. But I'm not sure where that stands.
Well, we do have opportunity zone here and it ends at basically...
Across the street from my office?
Kinda, right there, yes. And so it's more toward the historic...
It does not include...
Right.
It's crazy.
And see, that was the question that, as a matter of fact, that's the question that I brought up to Cory Gardner when he was here. As I mentioned, I said that, you know, the Fox Theater is one entity that we could use an opportunity zone, but because it's not an opportunity zone, it kind of gets us kind of messed up. So that's when he mentioned that I think that they were looking at maybe revising or some of the opportunity zones.
Now, what kept it out of that criteria for being one of them?
It's complicated.
Really?
Like anything else, it's complicated.
Well, does Walden, I was gonna ask him, but he left.
Yeah, and he's been looking into all those enterprise zones, opportunity zones. He's getting real familiar and as a matter of fact, he's going to come to one of our work sessions when we get through this and just let council know of everything that, all the incentives that were out there and what's working, what's not, and refine what we're doing. So he's on board and I'll let him know about that.
Whenever you guys are ready and he's ready, let's take a look at it.
Yep. Anything else?
We're doing codes soon, right?
So, yeah, so just, I'm glad you mentioned that. So codes are on December ninth. We put a kind of a summary on your drive along with the codes for your review. It's just more reading, a lot of reading.
Do I have five pages for five pages on the summary?
The summary kind of helps direct kind of the changes. But that's, Carrie McCool from the consulting firm is coming down on the ninth. She offered a day to come sooner or if council has questions sooner so that she can, you know, kind of be ahead of the game and get council questions. It's a big document. So that's the only thing on the work session for the ninth.
Yeah, what it was is that, you know, I was talking to Mike about this and I was telling him, is there a way we can get shorts of options of the changes? And I asked if there was a way, and I guess he went back to McCool. And because I said to read through the entire 278 pages of whatever's in there. We don't know which, unless you redline which is new, which is old. So this gives us some idea. And there are two sections in there that are brand new and it outlines it, it outlines, I don't have to look for it, so.
I noticed something started back in my P&amp;Z days.
Back to it.
Wow. That's when we did the comprehensive plan and started all this.
Oh, yeah.
So...
So we have a council meeting December third, work session December ninth, council meeting December 17th. The next possible work session Monday is either the 23rd or the 30th. I don't know, council.
Why don't we have a Christmas Eve? Why not?
Yeah, why not? So the dates are kind of, holidays are kind of coming in. I don't know.
I think maybe after the first of the year might be, because not only just for us, but for those people that you want to come down here. There's gonna be a lot of people traveling, that might be challenging. Or we just force them to do it. That doesn't always happen.
Right. I just wanted to put out there that holidays are here, the year is almost gone. I don't know what happened there, but yeah. So the ninth is gonna be a pretty lengthy one to go over Latin use codes. And then it may be January before we have another work session, unless something...
Do you have cards from the Ian and everybody to contact the one that's...
I didn't get Ian's, but I did get the MED gentleman, and we can definitely...
I'll share cards if you want them.
Okay.
How was the session that could have lasted instead of the...
Oh, yeah, the two hours that they brought down, a lot of people with a lot of... Okay, something, Mayor...
Special meeting tomorrow with the executive today.
Yes. Mayor, I'd like to mention that as with all grants, you know, they come around those deadlines. Well, the TSJC is putting in for a grant to kind of do some work on their lighting and their controls in the Masari. They've asked for a letter, just, you know, support for that. I wrote one up. It's due December 1st and of course for Thanksgiving. They would like to have it by Wednesday. I don't know if council has any issues with supporting their request for a dollar grant.
I know.
Thank you.
Do you wanna sign that, Mike, or do you want my signature on that?
I put your...
My name on it?
I did.
If you need to, go ahead, use my staff ID.
Yes, I have it here if you want.
Just in case. Are we a jerk?
Let's go home.
All right.
Good night, thank you. Good discussion.